Okay, we have one addition to the agenda. We'll put them in the new business number five, medical leave. So you need the input, we'll discuss it when we get to that item. That amendment, does anyone else have anything they'd like to add to the agenda? And if not, I will look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
By Anna, seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor of the approval with the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Scheduled presenters. Ms. Chapey is going to walk us through the MCA results. You have the floor ma'am.
Mr. Sampson, you're going to toggle them and then enter the presentation. Okay. So 2019 MCA results for our district. We're going to start with math. This is an area comparison to those other schools around us, Goodhue, KW, Randall, and ZM. That blue line, if you can see it, represents where we are at for 2019. So state average for math is 54.9% proficient. And Cannon Falls is at 59.9. So something to think about. Through our strategic planning, it was pretty clear. Not to put a big emphasis on testing, but in my opinion, I really look at where that state average is at. And you can see for the last three years, and if I would have 16 and 15 up, the state average is continuing to kind of decline. So this is a pretty natural. If you look at Cannon Falls, last year we were at 58.8, this year we're at 59.9. That's actually pretty incredible to have an increase. So being above state averages, kind of our goal. Comparing it to other districts is not as necessary, but I do want to give you a clear picture of where we are at. So that is math. The next slide is reading. So state average for reading is 59.1. And Cannon Falls is at a 62.6. Again, you see that blue line? And what you can see just from looking at that is that there was a decrease from last year to this year. But still above the state average. Kind of what we're looking at. Any questions before I move on to science? A big crowd tonight. Never have this for MCA presentations. Alright, MCA science. State average was 50.4% proficient. And as a district rep, 58.9. My line's a little off there. So last year, we were at 64.5, so we saw a decrease. Just like state average had decreased. These, I give credit to Tim Hodges. I think you remember, a couple of years ago when I presented, maybe last year. Yeah, it was last year. I don't remember last time I presented on this, but I thought the credit was given to someone else. But apparently he's the sole person behind this. And it's one of my favorites to look at, and you spend a lot of time looking at it. But the color coordinates and follows that student. Which is a lot better than comparing third grade averages to last year's third graders. Because you're not comparing apples to apples. This allows that. So some things that you want to think about is just the growth and development of a child. And as you follow them through, you know, I look at if you look at 2018 third graders to 2019 fourth graders, right, they're purple. So you'll see a slight decline there. Probably many reasons for that. I think the work that we're doing in PLCs and our standards-based grading within PLCs, and that article alignment, P12, is just going to be a continued effort within that. So you can look at that in more detail if you'd like.
What do you see across those major jumps? Like from the 48 to 67 in purple?
Um.
You see it, like it gets the
So.
Like seventh graders.
So I think there are many things. And I know, I'm sure Tim would want to add to it as well, but I think there's a lot of things. It really depends. I would love to be able to star on here where new curriculum was implemented.
Sure.
Or a huge data dive in one grade level in particular within standards. I know in my elementary, the fifth grade, two or three years ago, went through a huge change. And I can show you some of the data when you look at it. Let's see if there's one up there in particular.
So the same thing that he said for the declines too, right?
Absolutely.
Like, you know, new curriculum or?
Right, because new curriculum is going to take some time to get adjusted, right? But all of the curriculum that we're bringing in is going to be that standards alignment. But if you don't have the standards alignment with that curriculum, then you're going to see some deficiencies. Yes?
I was going to say, just because there's a ton of variables that go into that one testing day that we have to remember that this is just a snapshot in time.
Sure.
Also. Things could happen differently in a child's life that morning for the positive or for the negative. I think following the cohorts is a good way of tracking test scores and not looking at just grade level across from mid-year. Because they are different children.
Yeah. So this is MCA reading. And just to kind of take a peek, if you look at in red as fourth graders in 2016. And then you look at them in 2017. So from 38.3 to 69.1. That was a year that fifth grade had done some serious work. And if you follow that, 2017, fourth grade was 52.2. And you go to 2018, 73.6. And you follow that again. Yep. So these bring up a lot of questions with teachers. And we try not to place a whole ton of emphasis on it. But we do want to really look at data and see what it's telling us. So, but I agree, our strategic planning's, you know, we don't want to place a whole lot of emphasis on this one particular test. So science. Science is a little bit trickier to follow because it's done in fifth, eighth, and 10th grade. So you have to really kind of match up the colors. And I realize my pinks and reds are a little bit off there, but. So in fifth grade, if you look at the pink, in 2015, they were at 70.7%. And then as eighth graders, 53.3%. Moving forward in elementary, these are very consistent with years in the past. We, it basically shows where we are at currently as of our last year's testing at 63.2%. And traditionally in this building, we've always had a goal of a 5% increase. That's pretty unrealistic, I won't be honest. Or I'll be honest with you, because I haven't seen us get to a 5% increase. But in math, 63.2. Language arts, 63.9 to 68.9. Those are our goals. They're lofty, but we'll see where we go. Middle school, high school, going to continue to utilize best practice to increase student achievement. They want to do their course summative assessments by 2%. And to continue to offer the eight hours of staff development during the school year. And they are choosing that à la carte option where staff have variety of options to choose from. And then as a district, keeping student learning as a focus with educator effectiveness, building-wide literacy, grading and reporting, and our PLC and MTSS process that we're continuing to try and improve to better align the learning that's happening on students. I just gave you a lot of information. So I try the best I can to answer any questions that you might have.
I always wonder about, when I look at these things on here, that there's a school that's year in, year out, testing fairly significantly higher than everyone else. Is there a philosophy to that, or is there a house to that?
No, I wish I had a different answer for you Bob, than when you asked that. Because I, to be quite honest, I think you know, they spend a lot of time teaching to the test. And while I think that is wonderful and great, I think that there's a portion also that we're, we want kids to be good citizens. And that we're being here placing the emphasis on that. And I think we found in strategic planning that that was where our community and our school wanted to go. So, I don't know. I wish I had the answer, like the official answer.
Do you think the progression of the MCAs, are they maybe 10 years old, or are they older than that?
Um, oh, I don't know.
Is that direction we continue to go? And you know, it's, sometimes these are pushed upon districts. And this is what you're going to do when we spend 10 days out of our school life, getting ready for them and taking them. And I always wonder what the validity in them is.
I can answer that. I think I would rather put stock in our FastBridge testing that we use from, that shows student growth over the year. Rather than a one-day snapshot. So we can, we want to meet children where they are at. And our data teams use a lot of FastBridge data, both in the elementary and the high school. And so if we're looking at meeting kids where they are at currently, especially in the fall, and seeing what their growth is over time, and then adjusting our teaching strategies to meet those kids, using that data over four or five different assessment periods, or whatever, however, assessment periods they do in the elementary or the high school. I think that's a better gauge of how we are doing, rather than have one snapshot in time at the state. And I think there's been arguments at the state for that to affect more of a growth model than substantive type assessment at the end of the school year.
How much time does it actually take us for MCAs to get prepared for them, to get them taken?
Well, it depends. Teacher preparedness takes a lot of time. They have to be prepared every single year because there's many different changes with how it's proctored or how it's given. As far as students, you know, teachers are doing that a little bit almost all the time with the standards-based curriculum that we're using, is going over different questions that they might be answered. So I think that's a pretty tough question to answer for you. We certainly do not do drop everything the two weeks before and start hammering it. The Star Tribune gives out some practice questions, and we certainly are doing that a lot. We're tailoring a lot of our current assessments to mirror some questions that might be similar to that. So I think we're doing a really good job of not, you know, teaching it like to the kids where it's everything. Because we certainly don't want to create that sort of anxiety either.
I agree, we do a good job. I just don't understand sometimes the validity of these things.
I think it depends on who's in the legislature and our state government at the time, and the direction they want to take us.
Are the kids required to take these MCAs? Is that a requirement?
There's a lot of kids in that. That's a tough question. No. Not required. It's a requirement that we offer it, and that we hope that they will all take it. Because it measures growth.
I can tell it's an easy feeling to discuss it. Anything for Jen?
Are the MCAs mandated by the state?
Yes. Yep.
We have to offer them.
Okay. I don't know what the future is for that though. I would love to know.
Any other questions? Statements?
To keep up the good work?
Yeah. Yeah, I think so too.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks Jen.
Reports, this is not a report week. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share about any committees in general? Even though it's not our committee week, I guess, committee meeting?
I would just share that the foundation is participating in the Give to the Max Thursday, November 14th, so that's this Thursday. And you can go to the giveminnesota.org or givemm.org. And you can search for Cannon Falls Foundation. Make donations there. Early giving has already started. And through the 13th, you have a chance to win a golden ticket that would give a $500 donation to the foundation. I'll search first to where your Cannon Falls Foundation t-shirt on Thursday. And the goal is to raise $16,000. So make sure to visit that.
You want to hold off until the next meeting?
Yeah.
Anything for Anna? Stuck out there.
No, hurry.
Okay, moving down, administrative board reports. Elementary school, do you have anything?
Nope, nothing additional.
Okay. Middle high school, Kim?
I'd just like to thank John Hobart for his work arranging our veteran state program that we had yesterday at both buildings. John works with Mrs. Chapey and I every year to make sure that goes smoothly. And he usually finds a great speaker for us. And this year it was Craig.
Hedstrom.
Hedstrom, who is the current commander of the Cannon Falls American Legion. And we really appreciate the words that he spoke yesterday to our students.
Thank you. Our check representatives, Scotty here. Community ed activities.
Aside from what I have included, just want to say congrats to all our musical kids on a great show. They did the Little Mermaid last week. Courtney LeRue was our first-year director, she did a great job. And also the football team, congratulate them on a great season. Lost a heartbreaker last Saturday, so. Other than athletes and stuff.
Hey, thank you. Head of operations, I don't even know if we had a, in addition to that, but superintendent's report.
Yes, the only thing I want to give an update on is the strategic planning process. Our admin team met today, again with Amy to review where we had left off at our last meeting. And came up with five statements that we have sent out, not only to the board, but to the rest of the committee as a whole who had signed up and looking for feedback on those five statements. The five statements took into account a lot of those sticky notes that we had come up with during the process and tried to encapsulate them into five statements that we could use moving forward to create action plans around. So if you wouldn't mind taking a look at that, not only the board members, but the committee members and the admin team and the teachers that were in that process, to give us feedback over the next week on those statements. And then we will look to finalize that at the November 25th meeting so we can get to planning and action steps for the strategic planning.
People put a lot of work in that.
A lot of good work and a lot of good conversation. Hopefully everybody else felt the same way.
Yeah, and I think that, I just saw that email, I think those priorities are really good. I think it's better to break it into five, because they're trying to condense it into such broad ones.
Yeah, I think if you can respond back to Amy on her email there, either, you know, positive or with some changes, I think that'll help solidify what we have to bring back to the board. And that's all I have.
Okay. Next is public input due to data privacy concerns. A speaker may not address criticism toward an individual district employee through public input. So anyone that wishes to speak to the board about things, school district related, this is your opportunity to speak. Yes?
I'm Ian Sadi, I am a student at Cannon Falls High School. I run tech work in the auditorium for plays, including this most recent one. And I'm a part-time employee of Cannon Falls High School to work technical stuff in the auditorium for events. I would like for the tech people to be put on the agenda for the next meeting. Because by July 13th of 2020, we are going to be legally required to change our mic equipment off of its current frequency and onto a different one, because our current frequency is being turned over to T-Mobile and AT&amp;T. And our current mic system cannot do that. We have 12 total body packs, which basically are worn by whoever's using them, and have a headset or a mic that can be taped to the face. And nine of those 12 will be illegal to use as of next July. We have found a set of 12 body packs that the school could potentially buy online for a relatively cheap price. And I talked to our guy who is, who knows the most about mics. And he said he believes he could set them up if we had them. We also have issues with the lights in the auditorium. We currently have out of 58 total lights in the audience portion. A grand total of 32 of them, a majority, are out. This creates dark spots that makes it very hard for audience members to see where they are sitting, even when we have our light strips on on the floor. And this provides a tripping hazard for even potential use during school hours, let alone, for example, a play using it. We would just like to be put on the agenda for next time. And my coworker will hopefully be able to attend then as well. If you guys have any questions.
I think we'll hold off questions for that meeting, and then we can dig a little deeper into it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Moving forward, we have no old business. Under new business, consideration to approve the resolution canvassing the election results.
With the election results being finalized last Tuesday, and this resolution is needed to be passed by the board to finalize the election procedures, the appointed person stays on until the election person qualifies. So Mr. Dalton will need to stay on until Mr., oh my gosh, I just.
Robinson.
Robinson, sorry Larry. Draw a blank on his name. Till the person qualifies, which means that the elected person must turn in their certificate of campaign finance filing form and wait until seven days after the canvassing period. So seven days after tonight, Mr. Robinson can take the seat, which would be at the November 25th meeting, once he's done the oath of office and the acceptance of the office. And we would like to also thank Mr. Dalton for his service on the school board and the many hours he had served during the hiring process and the strategic planning process, to name a few at this time. So, basically the board will need to pass the election results through this resolution. And by the next meeting, Mr. Robinson should be able to have the seat.
So we need a motion in a second, and then the resolution reading. So look for a motion to approve the resolution canvassing the election results.
I'll make a motion.
Brenda? Second, did I hear?
Yep.
Anna?
Yep.
Thank you.
Alright, resolution canvassing returns of votes of school district special election. Larry Robinson, having received the highest number of votes, is elected to fill the vacancy in the term of school board members by January 4th, 2021. Said individuals shall take office as soon as he or she will. So Brenda?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Passed by a 4-0 vote. Before we move along, I know that we've acknowledged Mr. Dalton, but he came to us at a difficult time. We were, we were going through some superintendent changes at the time. And that if, normally when you get out of the board, you just hope that things kind of reach a crescendo with time, I guess. But in Mr. Dalton's case, he was pushed into quite a sequence when we, again, when we go through all these meetings, when we eventually hire Mr. Sampson. So he does deserve that recognition for the hard work he put in to lead us where we are today. So he did yeoman's work for us in his short tenure. So just want to acknowledge him.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, moving forward, consideration to approve the 1920 resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions, and reasons therefore.
This is an annual resolution that boards are asked to pass to direct administration into looking into their budget and considering any necessary reductions and bringing them forward if there are any necessary reductions. So we ask that you pass that so we can move into our budgeting phase in the coming months.
And once again, this is something we do every year.
Yes.
Look for a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make a motion.
Katie on the motion, second? Brenda on the second? Any other discussion? Resolution?
Resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore. Brenda? Yes? Bob?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Passed by a 4-0 vote as well. Moving down, consideration to approve the final list of 1920 winter assistant coaches.
I think this is the final list of coaches that we hired, or are we still short of junior high basketball?
It's been a long process. It's been hard. It's been really hard in all sports to find junior high coaches. So we did add a couple wrestling coaches to this list that you've already seen a handful of times. Those last three names are new names that you haven't seen yet. But we are looking for two more basketball coaches yet, so.
Okay, look for a motion to approve the list. I guess it's not the final list as of yet, that'll be brought to us at the subsequent meeting.
Do you hope so?
Look for a motion to approve the list as shown.
So moved.
And on the motion?
Second.
Brenda, second? Other discussion? All in favor of the attached list for winter assistant coaches, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve a medical leave starting March 12th through March 30th of 19.
Yes, this medical leave is for a suit ranking?
It's 20.
Oh yeah. 20. The year does change here, you're doing 24. Yeah. My apologies.
Looking for a medical leave for approximately three weeks, huh?
Yes.
I'm going to take Kerry.
Brenda? On the motion to approve?
Second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor of the medical leave? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's Kerry. Number five, that's the additional medical leave starting 11/22 of 19.
Yes, this will be intermittent for up to 12 weeks, and this would be for Michelle Byrne.
I would look for a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Motion by Anna, second?
Second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry. This is why you all showed up. You heard it was going to be a short meeting. You've had a series of these in a row, so you've chosen right. And you're here as civics class.
Due to the civics class, we're learning about our government, we're participating.
You have choices to learn about government, city council, school board, what have you. So there'll be some of you coming too. Other meeting? Are you required to come to more than one?
No.
No. Well, it's a pleasure to have you here. I'm sorry we couldn't get more in-depth, we just have a really tight agenda tonight. Good thing, huh?
You are more than welcome to come to more than one, although it's not required.
Upcoming, on November 25th, we will essentially swear in Mr. Robinson. We'll discuss the final audit for fiscal year 19. World's Best Workforce Summary and Intuition for Integration Progress Report. And other things that you deem that you would like to see on our agenda? If you have something of a concern or questions, you can